We still hope we can.
I have no idea.
That's captured, I think.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City of Muskegon City Commission Meeting for April 22, 2016. Before we begin the proceedings, I'd like to invite up Pastor Matt Sharp from Edmiston Avenue Baptist Church, lead us in prayer, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor.
Thank you, Mr. Mary. Let us pray. Father God, we give praise to your name on this day. Lord, we thank you for your faithfulness in changing one season into the next. Father, we thank you for all the many ways that you provide for us. Lord, we thank you for the way that you hold on to our future, that you have plans for our benefit and plans for our good. But Father, tonight, we also lift up to you those in our community who are in need. We ask that, as you have given us the ability and capacity to help them, Lord, please show us how we can be good stewards of the gifts and talents and treasures that you have given us. And Father, now, this evening, we ask that, again, you watch over our leaders. Lord, we ask that you give them the wisdom that they need. We ask that you give them discernment and strength in all the things that they stand in need of, Lord, to be good governors of your citizens. So, Father, we give you praise and glory and honor tonight, and I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the world, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. Can I roll call, please?
Commissioner Turnquist.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Galrin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hood.
Here.
Commissioner Warren.
Here.
Commissioner German.
Commissioner German.
Oh, here.
Commissioner Rensselaer Sibiga.
Here. Commissioner German, I get really easily distracted. My Franklin. Hey, before we begin the proceedings, we have some honors and awards, do we not, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we do.
Okay. The City of Muskegon and the Muskegon Rotary Club have been coordinating for a number of years now and are proud to announce winners of the 2016 Outstanding Citizenship Award. This year, we are pleased to present three awards. One is a co-recipient award and two individual awards. And now, the winners. For our co-recipient award, we're honoring Renee Hesling and Bob Fountain. They worked tirelessly at the Farmers Market in downtown Muskegon. They're co-recipients of our first award. They both exemplify the meaning of outstanding citizenship. They worked countless hours to perpetuate the market's popularity and ensure its success while serving individually and other programs and organizations within the city. Renee and Bob, could you come up? And then I'm going to give additional details on you, but then the people can see who we're Renee's accomplishments include graduating with me.
That wasn't a accomplishment.
Renee's accomplishment includes establishing the Power Produce Kids Club. And, well, we really push them through there, don't we? And that, great, great numbers. This is held at the Farmers Market. Renee spearheads corporate fundraising and is a familiar face during the six-month program. She sits on the advisory board for Kitchen 242, and if you haven't had an opportunity, go see the commercial kitchen at the market. She is the liaison for the culinary chefs and managers alike. Renee is responsible for writing the grant for the USDA Farmers Market promotional program. She's active in the United Way, Girl Scouts, Goodwill Industries, and serves on the United States Green Council of West Michigan. And Renee is a genuine homegrown hometown hero who gets no sleep. But I'd like to give you a little token of our esteem. Watch us go. Renee Hesling. Bob, didn't you used to work for the city?
Yes.
And you haven't retired yet, really, have you?
No.
No. Bob Fountain is a tireless advocate of Muskegon as well. Bob is the volunteer administrator for the Muskegon Farmers Market, Flea Market, and Kitchen 242 websites. He monitors the sites, updates the calendar events, music schedule, and culinary class schedule. He patiently teaches market staff how to effectively utilize their software, troubleshoot IT issues, and tracks weekly products and growth within the market. Bob also promotes the city by snapping photographs and posting them to various Facebook pages, participates as a Social Security Benefits Counselor and Score Counselor, and teaches computer classes at the Tanglewood Senior Services Center. Bob is truly an undisputed treasure to the Farmers Market and the City of Muskegon, and I'm darn glad you really never run away. And again, token of our esteem. Thank you. So there. Our next recipient is George Washington Carver Walker III. Mr. Walker, are you in the office or in the audience tonight?
He's not here.
Okay. Well, we're going to cover it anyway. Mr. Walker is recognized as a selfless participant in court-appointed special advocate programming, which watches over and advocates for abused and neglected children. He makes sure that the children don't get lost in an overburdened legal and social service system and ensures that they do not become languished in an inappropriate group or foster home. He remains the child's advocate until their case is closed and the child is placed in a safe, permanent home. George also helped launch Shepherd's Table Soup Kitchen, which feeds free nutritious meals to community members in need and is credited with starting the class, "The History of Food and Regional Cultures," which provides nutritional education to youth 12 to 18 years of age. Through George's faith and persevering spirit, he has overcome hardships that have enabled him to become a dedicated youth leader, Sunday School leader at Holy Trinity Church, and George is undeniably an outstanding citizen and beacon of light to his community and peers. So, George, if you're watching, listen to this applause. Is Alan Sario in the house?
Yes.
Come on up here. Alan's our final recipient, but not by any means the least. Alan's natural passion for Muskegon began at an early age. Shortly after graduating high school, Alan helped manage the Main Street Car Show and fulfilled his dream of improving vendor relationships within city events. He nurtured those close relationships and helped make the car show bigger and better by offering more food options. Known as a visionary, in 2006, with a group of friends, Alan helped create Taste of Muskegon, which is now celebrating its 10th year. His advocacy of Muskegon continues to help foster camaraderie among businesses and public alike. He assists with other popular activities, and most recently was the driving force behind the Burning Foot Beer Festival. The inaugural event of 2015 featured breweries from around Lake Michigan, and was wildly successful. Alan also finds time to participate in NIM's Neighborhood Association activities. Oh, I live up there. And supported the group's fundraising efforts to build a new playground. Alan is undisputedly the epitome of an outstanding citizen and entrepreneurial spirit. And as a token of our esteem, it's kind of like the Wizard of Oz, you know, the little baby. On behalf of the City of Muskegon and the Rotary Club, we're pleased to recognize the generosity, fortitude, persevering spirits these individuals exhibit and hereby honor them as outstanding citizens. We're excited to claim them as our own and look forward to continue to help them help us. Watch us go. Thank you again. You can either watch us go through the remainder of the proceedings or you go get dinner.
You can go home.
If you want to go get dinner, I'll go with you. Vice Mayor, you need to take over. May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary request. To approve minutes of the April 11, 2016 Work Session Meeting and the April 12, 2016 Regular City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Request to fly the Norwegian flag, City Clerk, summary request. Sons of Norway are requesting permission to fly the Norwegian flag at City Hall on Tuesday, May 17, 2016, in honor of Norway's Constitution Day. Staff recommendation, approval of the request. Fireworks display permit for Muskegon Country Club, City Clerk, summary request. Melrose Pyrotechnics Incorporated is requesting approval of a fireworks display permit for July 1, 2016, at the Muskegon Country Club at 2801 Lakeshore Drive. Fire Marshal Metcalf will inspect the fireworks on the day of the event. Staff recommendation, approval contingent upon inspection of the fireworks and approval of insurance. Beach Fitness Classes, Business Contract for City of Muskegon Parks, Department of Public Works, summary request. Staff is asking permission to enter into a one-year contractual agreement with Brenda Botenbrood of Beach Fit LLC at Pier Marquette Park located within the City of Muskegon to conduct fitness classes. Staff recommendation, authorize DPW staff to enter into a business agreement with Brenda Botenbrood of Beach Fit LLC. Request to purchase docks for Hartshorn Launch Ramp, Department of Public Works, summary request. Authorize staff to contract with the sole source supplier, Stable Flow Systems LLC of Grant, Michigan, to replace two floating docks at the Hartshorn Launch Ramp. The current docks are over 10 years old and no longer buoyant. Exact replacement cost would be more expensive and less durable than the Stable Flow option. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to hire Stable Flow Systems LLC. City MDOT Agreement, Laketon Avenue from Lakeshore to Nevada Engineering, summary request. Authorize the contract with MDOT for the Laketon Avenue construction between Lakeshore and Nevada and approve the resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign the contract. Staff recommendation, approve the contract and resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign both.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion? Commissioner Turnquist?
Item D.
Item D. Any others? Commissioner Johnson?
Seeing no others, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented, minus Items D and D.
It has been moved by Commissioner Johnson, seconded by the Vice Mayor, to accept the consent agenda as presented, minus Item D. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaer Sibiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item D, Commissioner Turnquist?
I would move that we enter into a one-year contractual agreement with Brenda Botenbrood of Beach Fit LLC at Pier Marquette Park located within the City of Muskegon to conduct fitness classes.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, seconded by Commissioner German, to authorize DPW staff to enter into a business agreement with Brenda Botenbrood of Beach Fit LLC. Commissioner Turnquist?
Yeah, I think it's a great program. I'm just wondering if there's someone here that can talk about a little bit. There's a program for the students, and then there's a program for residents and people who want to take the class, like where, about, on the beach it's going to be, and equipment and that kind of thing.
I'm actually glad you're asking. From this point forward, you can call me Brenda B., because that's a mouthful last name. I'm an inventor in the state of Michigan. I currently live in Grand Haven, but I'm house hunting in the Pier Marquette area because my kids are both graduating from high school. Beach Fit is located down in the Caribbean and South Florida currently in five-star resorts. I was getting ready to sell the company, but I want to, before I do that, try to do something kind of innovative with the City of Muskegon. Right over here is a double-headed shovel that you can do a full-body workout with using the resistance of sand and water. With the permission of the city, I'd like to bring Beach Fit to Pier Marquette and, without any previous PR work, launch PR out of the little city of Muskegon and have Beach Fit be representing some of the best lakeshore in the world. Do you have specific questions you'd like to know about? Beach Fit is built for every body type, so whether it be an athletic team, or groups of females, or church groups, or senior citizens, that tool can accommodate it.
Will it be held right on the beach?
Yes, it's used in sand space.
So you'll be using the same location every week or when you hold the classes?
So that people know how to find me, my vehicle has signs on it saying Beach Fit LLC, and I always stick the shovels in the sand so that I'm easy to spot. I'd like to have it in the same location in beach space so that people know how to find me on a regular basis.
One more question. Have you done this with the high school athletic teams before?
With Grand Haven schools, yes. And actually, my test market was really South Florida. The market is more conducive for year-round fitness, so I've worked out with Ocean Rescue with this product. What I'd like to do is see the variety of people that want to test-market the product in West Michigan, and instead of selling an invention to a bigger entity like Nike or Adidas, see if maybe the City of Muskegon would like to partner up. I still own 100% of a company. If this can go in Muskegon, it can go on any beach site in the world. I've already proved that down south. What's exciting about Muskegon is I was born and raised here. I went to Reese Puffer, but at the age of 22, I left, and I've lived in Southern California. I've lived all over the country. I'm back again, raising teenagers, and looking at West Michigan like I've never seen it before, and I'm a product of West Michigan. The golden jewel of this city, in my opinion, is Pier Marquette Beach. And I want to bring the eyes of the world to Pier Marquette. We don't sell Beach Fit. I've only licensed the right to use it, so people have to potentially come to the selected beach sand to use that product. Does that make sense? And when the workout's done, the sand space is exactly the way it was. That's the beauty of Beach Fit.
Vice Mayor, did you have a question?
I think I just answered it. I checked the line, and it's, that's the only apparatus that you use for your program?
Currently, I'm an inventor, though, so I'm a habitual product developer. There's a product called The Wave that was designed by Michigan Tech that hasn't even been built yet. Potentially, that could be built by the summer of 2017. Really, I look at this upcoming summer as a test market as to, will people come to Pier Marquette? Will they do Beach Fit? Is it well-received by the city? There's potential for growth here.
Question.
Commissioner German?
Yeah, excuse me. Hi. Are you one of the instructors, and do you have license in fitness instructors to conduct this program?
I do. I'm the owner of the company, and I'm a certified trainer. I became a certified trainer so that I could product develop. I will be conducting these classes. This is my baby, and so I want it to be presented the right way. I do have other trainers under my umbrella in South Florida and the Caribbean, but for West Michigan, I'm really kind of hand-holding this. Next summer, potentially, if athletic teams like Catholic Central Football Teams, or, let's say, Mona Shores, Muskegon High School, I could train their people on how to use this product and supply the product to them. It doesn't always have to be me. I think it's smart for this first summer to be me, though.
Right, okay. I like your sales pitch. Almost sounds like you're ready to be on Shark Tank.
If I had an hour, I'd get there a lot. I'm not meant for public television.
Good job.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes. So I looked up your program and your product, and I'm very excited about it. I just have a couple of questions. One, if there's been local interest from any of the Muskegon County teams so far, or any of the athletic teams that are interested in working with you, if they've expressed interest?
I hesitated to even reach out until I had this meeting tonight. You don't excite people and then be a downer, okay? I have a whole month of May to recruit these teams. As a matter of fact, I went into a hairstylist salon. I think it's nine, I forget what the numbers of it is. It's one of the bigger salons.
$297.
Yes, they have about 50 employees, and I just happened to be in there, and I said, would your staff be willing to come out for free to do collective workouts? And I spoke with their marketing manager, and she was all about it. But I left it like I have to get past this process. I think that there is a tremendous amount of corporate fitness movement options. There's fitness options for every group that you ladies and gentlemen can think of in the City of Muskegon to work out with Beach Fit. It's a very family-friendly, body-friendly workout. I am sitting on something that, let's just put it this way, there is something that I've been kind of keeping in the shadows for a reason. I didn't even know why. I actually saw the mayor for the first time at a five-by-five event about a month and a half ago. Was very impressed with his style up on stage, and the idea came to me that night. The program that night was about innovation. I'm an inventor, and I sit on the Michigan Inventors Coalition, which oversees 12 inventor networks. If this is launched the right way, not only the eyes of Michigan could look towards Muskegon, it's seriously a product that can be done in sand space all over the world. So wish me luck.
Yeah.
And I wish the city luck, too, because it goes really hand-in-hand with the 1 in '21 and the Wellville Initiative. It couldn't be more timed. The issue was, I was gone traveling down south. I wish I could have been here two years ago, but I was trying to build something. And, you know, really, right now, the reason I'm here is because I've got a junior and a senior in high school. I don't really want to miss the last two years. I don't think it's too late, though. With that wellness initiative and a product in sand space in Muskegon, it's like a beautiful alliance.
Well, and I'm excited because it aligns with those health movements that you're talking about, and it's affordable.
Absolutely.
And it's at the beach, like you're saying, utilizing one of our most beautiful resources. In South Florida and the Caribbean, is it utilized much for a tourism draw?
You know what's really interesting about that question? I'm in five-star resorts in Puerto Rico, St. Thomas. There's two in Miami and one over in Naples. Fitness is really real down there, but these resorts are even struggling because when people take vacations, even at a five-star, they want to eat and drink. They're not so much into the fitness. So it's been a very uphill battle for me to keep the trainers engaged and keep the classes full. Does that make sense?
Yes.
You, as an inventor, you kind of learn from test-marketing. So even though eventually Beach Fit is going to be the next novelty, it's still under the shadows. I am, I'm going against time, and all of you that have watched Shark Tank know, you kind of don't go big until you have something big to talk about.
Well, I'm excited about it.
I would like you to come try it. Actually, this whole council should come down and do a group training.
Yeah, watch it go.
Wouldn't that be something?
Yes.
And we can have martinis afterwards.
Is that heavy? That's my concern.
This is 11 pounds, and then I have baby Beach Fit that is half the size, that's seven pounds.
Okay.
So really, very petite women, elderly, or children can use Beach Fit.
Okay.
Commissioner Jackson?
I really like the concept, and I'm really excited to hear that you actually started it, and this is your business and you're growing it. I was under the impression, just reading through the agenda, that you were a licensee, that you were a franchise.
No, I'm a psycho inventor.
So I'm really, I'm really excited that this is your brainchild, and you're growing it, and I'm pleased that you've come back to West Michigan, and I really look forward to you finding a place in Pier Marquette to live, too, so that we can welcome you to the City of Muskegon. But I'm excited for your venture. I think it's going to be a hit at our beach, and so I'm fully in support of this and look forward to working out at the beach with you one day.
Well, you know, it's really interesting. I left Muskegon at the age of 22, and now I'm back at 48. I've been gone a long time. What's really interesting about sand quality and really the surf and the sunsets, I have test-marketed some of the best beaches in the world. We are at the best beach in the world, and I'm not just saying that. I'm a product of Muskegon. Sometimes when you grow up here, you take it for granted. Not anymore. I come back with different eyes because I've been all over the place. I know what people are paying for room rates to stay and look at sunsets. I know what people are using as far as revenue dollars to do innovative workouts. They go to Malibu and spend $6,000 a week. We need to have that money coming to a city like Muskegon.
Absolutely. Could you share with the audience and those at home as well how to contact you in order to sign up for this, or any teams with schools or other organizations that can reach out to you so they can participate?
Certainly. The main number is 616-566-2241. My name is Brenda B. The website is BeachFit, one word, B-E-A-C-H-F-I-T dot com. Real simple. They can find it.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
And best of luck.
Thank you very much.
And welcome home.
Well, you want to know what? This is a great campaign you have going, and it's really nice to be back.
Very good. Thank you.
Would you like me to leave the meeting? I'm just staying just to watch.
No, stay. We love audiences. We do. We get them all the time. We love it. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaer Sibiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Public hearings, please.
Public hearing to review and receive comments for 2016 to 2020, five-year regional consolidated and annual action plans, Community and Neighborhood Services. Summer request to conduct a public hearing on April 26, 2016, to receive comments from the public concerning the 2016-2020 five-year regional consolidated action plan developed by the Community Neighborhood Services Department. After the public hearing, all comments received during the 30-day comment period, April 13 through May 13, will be documented and included in the plan as required. Staff recommendation to direct staff to gather comments from the public and submit the five-year regional consolidated action plan to HUD after the public comment period.
Thank you. Ms. Bailey, do you want to give a thumbnail of the process and where people can review the documents?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Aida.
Okay, a thumbnail. What's really good about this particular five-year plan is that we are collectively doing it as entitlement communities. So Muskegon Heights, Norton Shores, and the City of Muskegon are all partnering to submit one plan for this region. We are more alike than we are different, and so for that purpose, we are dedicated to providing that information about what our region looks like. What we are doing separately is submitting to HUD our own individual action plans about how we're going to address the needs of the community, challenges of our communities, and each of us have our own pot of money to address those needs. So we're each sending in a plan, but the five-year plan is going to cover the entire region. So that in itself is something new and something different, and this is the first year that we are submitting the plans online. So we're going to see how that goes. We have never done it before. So it's a new process, but we're learning, and so I think when you saw the PDF, it's just a lot to print off, so hopefully, as you start looking at it, what will be turned in is something different from what you have tonight because we're, it's, it's in the process. I'll say it like that.
Going to be fleshed out more?
Yes, absolutely. Because we're trying to get information from both cities, and so it takes time, and, you know, you always think you have a lot of time until it's time to turn it in, and it's like, oh, we don't have enough time. So we're meeting again before the submission, which is mid-May.
And when will the submittal be made?
Our submittal for the plan and for the regional plan is the 17th, I believe, of May. So the comment period will end before that, but we'll take our time to make sure that each of the communities has the information that they'd like in it and give them an opportunity to review it that much more.
So be able to review it on... So be able to review it online and?
Absolutely.
And hard copy as well?
Absolutely.
And?
Our hard copies are here at City Hall in our office and in the clerk's office at Hackley Public Library and also we have a plan at the Hartford Terrace location.
Okay. Good. Any other questions for Anita? Commissioner Warren?
I think we're all excited to hear our neighboring communities working together with us. Can you explain some of the benefits though of going at this as a partnership rather just as individual cities?
Well, individually, it takes that much more time because we're contracted with the city of Norton Shores. That would mean that I'd have to write a separate plan for Norton Shores, which I've done in the past. But this year, I only have to write one consolidated plan for both Norton Shores and the city of Muskegon. And so since we were partnering, we asked Muskegon Hikes if they would be interested in participating with us and of course, they were very happy to do that. It's better when you have, you know, three heads than one. And you're looking at just a broad base of needs versus saying, well, our city is like this and your city's like that. You can get more into the particulars of what your city needs, your needs are based on you personally running your city. So for me, I just thought that this would be a wonderful way to get a little help. But when we found out that we have to put it online, there, everyone wasn't up to speed with using HUD's system. So I had to do most of the work, but what I can say is that the other municipalities were very helpful in helping me to get the information that I need and are still working with me up to the point when we have to submit it, so.
Excellent.
It's a great example and it's one of the reasons to be able to crow about the level of collaboration that we do have, you know, amongst our fellow communities and with the county.
Absolutely.
As a whole and sometimes it's not spoken enough, but it's a fine job and a fine exercise and I'm glad to see that we've been able to expand our collaboration.
Thank you.
In this area, so thank you. Anything else? Are there any members of the public that would like to address this issue?
Shirley Green from Lakeside. I guess I don't understand what this is about. What kind of ideas if it's public supposed to put in their comments? What are you looking for and what is it going to do?
Anita, you want to?
I shouldn't have walked up here.
Yeah, flesh out the process for Ms. Green.
Well, let me just say that every community that is considered an entitlement community like ours, we receive CDBG money and we also receive home, which is a product of producing affordable housing units in our area. And we're the only community that receives home dollars, but Norton Shores and both Muskegon Hikes, they receive CDBG dollars. The intent of those dollars are to benefit low-income families. That's the purpose of it. And so each year, we have to write a plan that says how we're going to use our annual allotment of money. And every five or three to five years, you have to write a major plan that looks at your community and looks at what are the specific needs, homelessness. They have a long list of strategic planning that they ask you what's going on in your city or your community. And so this year, instead of doing it just about the city of Muskegon, we decided that we would look at our entire Muskegon County and see what kinds of needs there are for homelessness, for housing, for food.
So you're looking at building houses particularly or is it more?
The city of Muskegon is. We've been, you know, providing affordable housing units and supplying other agencies with funds from that same allocation. So CDBG in particular requires that we do offer a plan and that we publicly put it out to the citizens to say, what do you think the needs are of this community and what do you think about the programs that we're providing? We provide a home repair program and that particular program helps any citizen who income qualifies with a housing repair. So that includes that. Correct. And so that's just one of many programs that we provide. And so every year, we kind of look at, is this a good program? Is this something that we can, you know, do away with? Should we do something different? And we take our staff comments as well because the department heads kind of have an interest in some of the funds that we receive and so we hear from them what are their particular needs of the upcoming year financially? Do they need a little more money for streets or do they need something different in recreation? So we fund a lot of different programs. And so it is required that we get the information from the citizens, that we let the citizens talk to us about what's important to them.
But if you're going to put it online, I think if you give them a few ideas of what you are looking for, like I didn't understand it and I'm sure a lot of other people did.
Well, I was hoping that, you know, with my name at the bottom, that you would call and ask me and then I could kind of explain it to you. But it is, it's listed in the paper that you can call our office and speak directly to me or send me an email if you're so inclined. Otherwise, I do take phone calls. I certainly will come out and meet with any neighborhood association group to discuss it. I want to say, four years ago, we invited the public to come into this arena and kind of talk to us about, you know, I think that was the time when we had people saying, we'd like to have heated sidewalks downtown so that we could, you know. That's something we couldn't really afford with those funds, but those were some of the comments that we received and that helped us to kind of look each year at what can we address that the citizens brought to us. Of course, we can't address everything, but.
Right.
And the money each year changes and so there are some programs that we do have to cut and only because we don't have the funds to cover them, so.
I like the programs where you can.
All right.
Help people redo their thing.
Oh, their homes, yes, absolutely.
So remember, this will be posted online as we go through. There is a citizens committee called the Citizens District.
Council.
Yeah, council. That also meets on a semi-regular basis as the funds come in from the federal government, the community block development grants and home funds. So there is public representation during that period. That membership has to be made up of particular individuals from the particular wards of the city. Commissioner Johnson is the commission liaison to that committee, working with Anita and the gang. But those are all open meetings as well. But again, any questions, direct them to Anita Bailey at the Community and Neighborhood Services Department. And we do crave that public input so that we have a better idea of what to do going forward and be able to explain, you know, limitations as well. But it's a great way to continue to foment or create as much transparency as possible throughout the entire process. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Anita. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address this issue? If not, Commissioner?
Sure, I move we close the public hearing and direct staff to gather further public comments from the public and submit the five-year regional consolidated and action plan to HUD after the comment period.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Rensmasipiga, seconded by Commissioner Johnson, to close the public hearing and direct staff to gather comments for the public, from the public, and to submit the five-year regional consolidated and action plan to HUD after the public comment period. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Vice Mayor Hood.
Yes.
Commissioner Warren.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Rensmasipiga.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Galvin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. New business, please.
Third quarter two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen budget reforecast, finance, summary request. At this time, staff is transmitting the third quarter two thousand fifteen, sixteen budget reforecast, which outlines proposed changes to the budget that have come about as a result of changes in revenue projections, policy priorities, labor contracts, updated economic conditions, or other factors. Staff recommendation, approval.
We'd like to welcome the Minister of the Exchequer this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just a few highlights with regards to the third quarter budget reforecast presented before you this evening. Looking at general fund revenues, income tax revenues, reforecasts up an additional three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for this reforecast from the second quarter reforecast. Liquor license and tax rebate revenues projected to be down slightly by seven thousand dollars. Vacant building fee revenues projected to be up by forty thousand dollars for the fiscal year. Reimbursement election revenue is projected to be up nine thousand dollars this year. Reimbursement for lock cleanup revenue is projected to be down two thousand dollars. Passport court revenue is projected to be up twelve thousand dollars from the second quarter reforecast. In addition, reimbursement demos, board up revenues projected to be up twenty thousand dollars from the second quarter reforecast. Mortgage products revenue is projected to be up two thousand dollars from the second quarter reforecast. And grant revenue from the community foundations is projected to be up twelve thousand dollars for this quarter's reforecast. The expenditures for general fund, a few highlights of changes there for the third quarter. We've added twenty thousand dollars to the civil service budget for the cost of the MML job description project that was previously approved by the commission and is nearing completion now. We have reforecast to transfer thirty-five thousand dollars from the general fund to local street funds for the cost of an alley refaving project that is going to be proposed before the commission in the near future. In addition, major capital improvements reforecast to increase cemetery TIS from five thousand dollars, by five thousand dollars for this reforecast and increase repairs to Vorwalk at Koozie Park by twelve thousand dollars, as well as to increase the marsh field bleacher upgrades by sixty-seven hundred dollars as well. Any questions about the general fund?
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Smith? Commissioners? Commissioner Johnson?
First of all, I'd like to thank you. I had some last-minute questions sent to you earlier today. You promptly responded before the meeting, so I really appreciate that. One question that I had that I didn't post to you and I hate to put you on the spot now, but we touched on it in the last reforecast in terms of the income tax. We, in the second quarter reforecast, it was projected increased, the projection was increased. And with this third quarter forecast, it's projected a further increase. So I was just wondering if you can provide some insights as to what's driving those increases? Is it corporate income? Is it, you know, wage increases, personal wage increase? Is it more people getting jobs? What are some of the driving factors into why we're seeing the increase in our income tax question?
We do have our treasurer and income tax administrator in office this evening, so in case I mess up, he can correct me. But we are seeing some pick up with regards to withholding revenues, but really what's been driving it lately, the last number of months especially, the last year, has been corporate estimates, for example. They've been up. So it appears that a number of our businesses in the area, especially corporations, have markedly improved with regards to their income lately. So we are optimistic that that's indicative of economic conditions changing for the positive and hopefully that will then in turn, we'll see that with individuals as well, hopefully.
Thank you. But just like everything in life, it goes in cycles.
It does.
Any other questions for Mr. Smith? Thank you, sir.
And if you had any questions about any other particular funds?
No, no question. I was going to comment about the LC Walk Arena Fund as it looks like we're projected to, we've reduced our output, our outlay from the previous year since it's under management and with that reduced outlay, it looks like we're going to be breaking even roughly. So that's, yes, fingers crossed on that, so.
Trying to get close, breaking even.
And we're getting more events in there, more tournaments in there and more activity. So that's really exciting to see and hopefully that trend continues.
Absolutely, absolutely. Good point. Okay. Thank you. If there's nothing else, I'll, Commissioner Rensmasipiga?
I move we approve the third quarter two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen budget reforecast as presented.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Rensmasipiga and seconded by the Vice Mayor to approve the transmittal of the third quarter two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen budget reforecast as submitted. Any further questions or comments? Roll call please.
Commissioner Warren.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Rensmasipiga.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Galvin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Any new business to be brought before the body, Commissioners?
I just have a question, excuse me, it's concerning the project, the Midtown Square project. Construction and everything is going well, getting a lot of feedback from the citizens and constituents. They're very excited about the project. One question came up about the alleys in the, on that property and maybe Mr. Mohammed, if he's still here, he could probably answer this. Will that alley be paved? You have not?
There won't be an alley.
Oh, there was, okay, because the guy thought it was an alley. I wasn't sure on that, so thanks for clarifying that, clarifying that up. Also, another question, with a demolition for a property that should have been down, we talked about this in discussion at the commission before, but it's on the corner of Wood and Marquette. Perry Denny owns that property. I did see some type of construction going on. Is that the city's pursuing that project to?
Well, it actually is on the demolition list right now with a mischief grant and it will be down probably no later than June thirtieth. I almost guarantee you.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
It's on the short list.
Okay, all right.
Anything else, Commissioners? Last Thursday?
Are you looking at me?
No, I'm looking at Adam Clerk.
Oh, yes.
But I'm looking at you.
Yes.
All right.
Sure, last Thursday was great.
Last Thursday, Adam Clerk and Administrative Assistant Cummings accompanied as well and we went out to the hub out in Seminole Row and the, and what's the name of the organization again?
The Muskegon Area Sustainability Coalition.
Coalition. And the campaign, Watch Us Go, was recognized and the campaign was?
It was for Earth Week two thousand sixteen awards and it was a sustainability champion special project campaign.
And we were recognized and awarded that last Thursday, so I just wanted to bring that to the commission and to the public. So fine job, city staff and all of our partners and all the other municipalities and throughout the county that are, well, making this a go. And of course, it's not just the communities and government agencies, it's everybody from individuals to neighborhood associations, to nonprofit organizations, to people in the boardrooms of kitchens, like Shirley's Board at Lakeside Neighborhood Association to corporate boards that are, that are driving this all. So big kudos and of course, the people that are carrying a lot of the water are the citizens. So continue to go out and celebrate the great work that we all do together. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the commission? And yes, there are, at least beginning with three. I've received some requests. Each individual that would like to address the commission is given three minutes. We do ask you to come to the podium and give your name and address. Please, individuals, address the chair or me, the mayor. Please, individuals, address the chair or me, the mayor, and commission members will hold their comments until afterwards. This is the political seasons, and we do invite people to introduce themselves, but we do ask anyone standing for public office to refrain from any, well, involved political statements, but we certainly do welcome you to give your name and the office that you're running for. First up is Destiny Keener-Sargent, and you're here to speak on a very excellent enterprise here within the community.
Thank you for this opportunity, Mayor, and to our Commissioners, to Mr. German for encouraging and inviting me out. I just wanted to give a little spiel on Kids' Food Basket. Anywhere I go, I give that spiel, and I'm running for mayor. I'm just... But, excuse me if my voice goes out, I've been talking all day about Kids' Food Basket because I just love this program, I love its mission. But for you all that don't know, I just come to share about what Kids' Food Basket is in Muskegon, and it pretty much aligns. When I think of Watch Muskegon Go, I am a lifelong Muskegonite. I live and breathe for this city. I am very protective of this city, our resources, as well as our citizens in this community. And I've always just had a passion for people, and it just so happened that God led me in the right place to be able to do such chosen work. Kids' Food Basket serves in Muskegon, we actually have three sites, but in Muskegon particularly, we serve 900 children every single day for the entire year. Some people don't know that we serve in the summer as well. And we package nutritious, healthy meals to kids that are 70% or more of the poverty rate. And currently, we have three schools that we serve throughout Muskegon and Muskegon Heights. Those schools are Martin Luther King Elementary, Nelson Elementary is our newest, and Edgewood Elementary. So, again, we total 900 sack suppers that we package in one hour every single day and get to those schools, so that they have a nutritious evening meal. The purpose of that is because we have such a high rate of childhood hunger in Muskegon. In Muskegon particularly, one out of every five children is food insecure, and so, our mission is to eliminate that. And like I said, when I think of Watch Muskegon Go, I think of the tenacity of Muskegon, and I think of the resilience of Muskegon, and I also think of how helping and loving and caring that we are. So, it's my wish that if you would love to, I would love for you to learn more about Kids' Food Basket, to please reach us. We are located at 1011 Second Street. We're housed in Central United Methodist Church. They have graciously give us, offered their building to us, and they donate that space to us. And we have over 200 volunteers throughout Muskegon County that come in and make this mission work, and we really get to see, I get to watch Muskegon Go every single day, and it is such, it's such a wonderful feeling. And so, I encourage you, if you are not part of Kids' Food Basket, please come and learn about us. Please help us, because like I said, we have seven more schools to get off that waitlist. Our work is not yet done, and we need the community. We are 100% charity-funded. Each sack supper costs us about a dollar, so that's $900 every single day I'm hitting the pavement and looking for. There are a number of ways that you can be involved, and that's with your time, talent, or treasure. If you want to involve all three, we will take all three. And I will ensure you, if you want to volunteer for us, we will take you, and I will make, I will work you, I'm going to work you. We will use your time wisely, and you can also bring your children. We take volunteers from age five to 105. So, again, I encourage you to come out. Our phone number is (231) 747-8575, and you can visit us on our website as well, it's www.kidsfoodbasket.org. Again, thank you for this time and opportunity.
Destiny, thank you, and bless you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, thank you for having me come out as well. I wanted to come out today to introduce myself. I am Brenda Sprader, and I'm running for Muskegon County Probate Judge. I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that the new probate judge is going to be a full-time family law court. I do have an article with me that was from MLive April 13th, where Judge Marietti explains how these changes are going to affect the certain dockets. So, I will be here after if anyone would like to meet me, have any questions, or would like to take a copy of the article. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you wanna do a foxtrot with this guy?
You want me to embarrass Frank, don't you?
No! We just like to celebrate.
I dance for the local Dancing With The Stars every year, and we raise money for the local food pantries. And this was my eighth year, and every year, I get a new partner, and I was so lucky to have Mr. Frank Peterson be my partner this year, and we did dance to a foxy song.
There you go. And thanks for that effort, both of you, because they made a good take this year, and it also goes to an exceptional cause with the food pantries. Thank you. Josh Machino? Did I get that right?
Yes.
Can we just get your name and address again, Josh?
816 Washington, Josh Machino, and thanks for it. And it'll be quick, I just wanna kind of encourage and promote the idea of revitalizing Henry Street, the dirt road part, the two-lane slash one-lane, the road track, like making it more like a people culture trail, primarily for bikes and pedestrians. Like, bricks would be perfect, and it would connect right to your Harris Landing and your people trail. And it would also make things easier for biking. I'm a Jimmy John cyclist. Muskegon's first Jimmy John cyclist. And also, like, if you wanna get rid of, start getting all your litter picked up and get rid of your trash, schools, start making schools, sign up for terracycle.com, it's free, and they can make thousands of dollars shipping waste away.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Question. Excuse me.
Vice Mayor?
Josh, what's a Jimmy John cyclist?
Bicycling, delivering the bike.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the... Oh, politician! Oh, just like me! Mr. Chair! How are you?
Thank you, Mayor, I'm doing great. Yourself?
And we also have Commissioner Ben Cross in the audience. Good evening, Commissioner, County Commissioner.
Yes, well, actually, he's the vice chair of the county commission, and I proudly serve as your chairman of your county board. And I come to you today, well, first of all, I learned something. One of the things I was wondering about was how the Walker Arena did this past year, and I was very much involved with the talks with the big transition there, and so that was really encouraging to hear that, that things are on the upswing there, so. But we're beginning our budget season at the county, and one of the things that I always, we always hear a lot about of the revenue sharing, and what money's gonna be available to us at the county, and of course, with you, with the cities and the townships here in Muskegon County. And so, I decided to start doing a little bit of research on what's been happening as it pertains to revenue sharing in this county. And one of the things that I found is that since 2002, there's been approximately $32 million that's been cut from revenue sharing in this community, coming from the state. And I just think it's unacceptable, to be quite honest with you. It's hurting our cities, it's hurting our townships, but furthermore, to even narrow it down even farther, 16 million of that money, $16 million alone, has been cut from the city of Muskegon since 2002. And I think that's really incredible. I mean, what do you think about, what could this community do? What could this board do with $16 million to provide services to its residents? And that's what, it's, to me, it's devastating when we have money that's been promised to us, money that we're counting on to provide those services, and the money's being taken away to simply balance the state budget because of the cuts that are going on at the state level. And the state needs to find the money to take care of their end of their obligations, and who is paying the price? Cities and townships. And I want to be specific, I'm talking about now in Muskegon County. You know, you think about where that money could be spent on. It could be spent on hiring more police officers, more firefighters, whatever, whatever way that you think as a city commission, that you can improve services to your city, that's where that money is being taken from. And I think that Michigan has one of the worst revenue sharing practices in all of the country, to be quite honest with you. In Flint alone, and I'm gonna go back again, since 2002, in Flint alone, $62 million has been withheld from revenue sharing from this state. It all goes back to me, when we start looking at this, it really goes back to a poor relationship that I believe our state has with its local governments. And that relationship needs to, needs to get better. We need to, when I'm talking about our relationship between state government and local governments, I just really believe that we need to start doing more than just cutting, cutting, cutting. We need to start, from a state level, there needs to be better opportunities made available, revenue, economic development partnerships. I think that's more important, and that's something that we're gonna have to do, because we're, I see it at the county level, you're seeing it at the city level, you can only cut so much, and after a while, what more can you cut from? So, to end, I just wanted to make sure you know that that's something that really came to my attention. That is one of the reasons why I am running for the 92nd District of the State House of Representatives, to represent this area, to bring experience to the state of Michigan, especially for this area, and how it pertains to local government. I want to be able to build that relationship between the state and local governments, and I truly believe having that experience behind me is gonna really help, and it's gonna really benefit the 92nd District here as a whole. So, unless you have any questions for me, that's all I have to offer.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Seppel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the commission? If not, Vice Mayor, take us home.
If there's nothing else, I move to adjourn.
Second? Been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner German, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Never? Okay, we're outta here. Thank you, everybody. Good night.